Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, folks that are here in the audience as well as those folks that are watching at home. Welcome to the Yountville Town Council meeting of May 17, 2011. What I would like to remind folks that are in the audience, if you would please turn off your cellphones so we don't have any static or interruptions during the meeting. Also, if you are not aware, there are agenda packets on the wall to your right if you don't already have those. So, once again, welcome, and I'd ask for the roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Councilmember Doren Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
And we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I have asked Walter Berry, who's here representing the Allied Council of the California Veterans Home, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, and we'll be hearing from you shortly a report on the Allied Council meeting. We will move on to Item 6, Closed Session Report. Do we have a report from closed session held on May 3?
Mr. Members of the Town Council, we do not.
Thank you very much. We'll then move on to Item 7, Adoption of the Agenda, and I would request that we switch on Items 12A and B. I'd ask that we can vote, or at least announce the vote on Item 12B, which is the appointment of a representative to the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency Bicycle Advisory Committee before we hold our budget workshop. I'll move for that.
If I may, Member Mayor and Council, we've also had a request for pulling Item...
9B.
9B. And that will be a standalone item that will be, staff is recommending that that be held prior to 12A.
I will...
Under your request, we would do, 12B would be the first item, and then the request on the...
9B.
9B, and then 12A.
Now you've lost me. Do you want three separate votes for the... No.
No, no. What I'm saying is, you're under 12 administrative regular items, the order would now be, first, the discussion related to the 9B, which is the water service request. I'm sorry, you requested first to do the vote of the...
I'm just switching 12B and 12A.
Right.
And then you are also responding to a request to pull Item 9B.
So, in order to pull that in sequence, if you'd like to do that, it would be the vote on the bicycle member...
We're not, we're going to pull the consent calendar 9B and have that discussion, and then when we get down to regular calendar, we'll just remember to reverse that order and take that at that time.
Yes.
Correct. And then the last item under the administrative regular items would be the budget workshop.
Right. So, I am moving that we, I'm not pulling Item 9B, that is a request by the public. I am moving that we change 12A and 12B sequence.
Second that.
All in favor of changing 12A and 12B?
Aye.
All right. Now, we will also have, when we get to the consent calendar, we'll deal with the pulling of 9B, but right now, we will, I will welcome a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, now, we will move on to Item 8, which is public comment. So, this is an opportunity for anyone that would like to speak on any item that's not already listed on our agenda tonight. Feel free to come up and make your comments now. Is there anyone that would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? I see not a motion from a soul out there, so I will take that as a no. Now, we will move on to consent calendar, and we will pull Item 9B, and we will, I will welcome a motion or any other comments on any of the other items in the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve consent calendar items A, C, D, and E.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, now, we will get to Item 9B, which is an appeal on, let's see, adoption of the resolution 2964-11, making findings in support of Town Council determination to uphold the Town Manager's decision denying requests to provide out-of-town water service to 1873 Yountville Crossroad. And before we continue with that item, I will recuse myself because my residence is within 500 feet of this property, so I will not be participating on this item, and I will hand over the item to Vice Mayor Chilton.
This item has been pulled from the consent calendar. We have also received multiple requests, I believe from the council and from an attorney representing the property owner, to continue this item to our meeting on June 7. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Vice Member, members of the council, and I believe the legal counsel for the applicant, and the applicant are present this evening, and would like an opportunity to address the Town Council.
This evening?
Yes, merely to make that request for the continuance.
Okay. Well, we, I assume we will have a general public comment if that's the case?
Yes.
On this item?
Yes.
Okay. Just as a reminder, this item is to consider the adoption of resolution to make findings at our last meeting. We had the formal appeal hearing, which was a public hearing. This is not a public hearing at this time, so we will not be specifically dealing with the appeal, but rather the findings. And at the suggestion of the Town Manager, or I'm sorry, the Town Attorney, I will open up public comment on this item, and will first invite the attorney who has requested continuance, if you'd like to make a statement.
Thank you. My name is Brian Russell. Thank you, Vice Mayor, Town Council members and staff. I want to thank you for this opportunity to move to continue this, I guess, issue to the next hearing date. We really appreciate the opportunity. In the last hearing, we didn't have the Lamond family to come and speak to you guys. They are here today to say a few words of their gratitude and their appreciation, and just overall address you, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Great. David Lamond, can I introduce him?
Please.
He's the, he's the property owner, and he'd like to say a few words.
Right.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and council members, town staff. I just want to apologize, first and foremost, for having taken up so much of your time on this matter. It was never our intent. My wife, Kelsey, and I are very excited to be members of this community and to raise a family here. So, I just want to apologize for having taken up so much of your time on this issue. It was never our intent, and I hope, I hope it hasn't been too much of a problem. So, thank you again for your time, and that's it.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to make a comment before the council considers their request for continuance? And I see, again, no motion. Is the rest of the council amenable to continue this to our item, our meeting on June 7?
I'm fine with that.
Can I have a, have a motion to do so?
Move to continue this, Item 9B to, was it June 7, 2011?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed. That passing unanimously, we'll see you back here on June 7. And I will invite the mayor back.
And so, that concludes the consent calendar items. We will move on now to Item 10, Presentations, and first, I'll welcome back Mr. Berry to give us an update from the Allied Council meeting that was just held up at the California Veterans Home. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, and I want to acknowledge Ms. Moller for coming to our last meeting, and I know the other council people have been up there prior times. Anyway, I don't want to start out as a joke, but most of you have seen the Yountville Sun, and alls I can say, I guess, in deference to the situation is, when it's too good to be true, it's probably not. And certainly, that's the case with this article. Let me read the headline. "Vets Home on Spending Spree, Aims to Create $25 Million Wish List." Now, I won't say there is absolutely no truth in that, except for the money part. This is not something the state, and if any of you follow the state, you know they're in a deep budget crunch, the idea that they would suddenly throw not just $25 million at us, but their seven other homes in the state system. So, anyway, that's, that part's not the case. What the administrator at the home, Marcella, really did was send out a suggestion list on the area emergency preparedness. Now, some of the suggestions she got back were clearly not within that area, but she did want them to kind of think large, because as most of you know who've lived there for any length of time, many of our buildings are getting old. In fact, most of them were built in the 40s and 50s. So, there are some things that will need to be taken care of. How they do that is anyone's guess, but it will be done eventually. But I just want to kind of try to retract this, at least the impression of the article, that we were suddenly afloat in money. We still have an emergency, not an emergency, but a no-hiring freeze, a hard freeze, as they call it, so we can barely operate the programs that we've got now. Anyway, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try, but the Allied Council did have a meeting with, with Marcella, and she is a home administrator, and I think was able to kind of clear up what she could, but of course, none of you were there. Are there any questions or comments?
Does the council have any questions about the most recent Allied Council meeting?
I...
No, thank you very much for coming.
We'll do better next time.
Thanks very much for being here.
Thank you.
I'll move on to the next presentation, which is a proclamation declaring June as Land Trust of Napa County Month, and I believe Chip Borrell is here to receive the proclamation, as well as some other members of the Land Trust. So, if you'll, Chip, if you'll meet me at the podium, please. The proclamation, proclamation declaring the month of June as Land Trust of Napa County Month. Whereas the Land Trust of Napa County is the only area organization, public or private, that wholly works to protect the natural diversity, scenic open space, and agricultural life of Napa County; and whereas the Land Trust of Napa County provides land use and research opportunities for students from preschoolers to doctoral candidates, opportunities which foster appreciation and understanding of the natural environment and the conservation of natural resources; and whereas the Land Trust of Napa County has worked collaboratively with private landowners, generous donors, and resource agencies, resulting in the permanent protection of more than 53,000 acres of land with significant conservation values; and whereas the Land Trust of Napa County has more than 1,700 active members and more than 200 active volunteers participating on more than 20 committees, and all of whom work to ensure the important Napa County land is preserved for both present and future generations; and whereas the Land Trust of Napa County has worked with private landowners to ensure a portion of Hopper Creek flowing into the town of Yountville, the Mount St. John View Shed to the west of Yountville, and the Stags Leap View Shed to the east will be protected for all time; and whereas all those who have a special fondness for Napa County and want to ensure that its incomparable beauty, rural character, biodiversity, and agricultural vitality are protected in perpetuity owe a deep appreciation for the efforts by the Land Trust of Napa County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor, on behalf of the Yountville Town Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June, my birthday month, by the way, that's not in here, though, as the Land Trust of Napa County Month, and express our appreciation of the organization's efforts on behalf of all Napa County residents. Thank you.
On behalf of the Land Trust, this is greatly appreciated. This is so well-stated, I'm not going to add some of what I was going to. So, my name is Chip Borrell. I'm on the board of the Land Trust, and I'm a volunteer for the Land Trust, and have been so for about 20 years and plan to continue. And in preparing for this, I noticed that Yountville, compared to any other city or town in the valley, has more of the Land Trust's conservation easements in a kind of a two-mile radius of, of the town. There's Beckstoffer Vineyard, Vine Hill Ranch, Hopper Creek to the northwest, Missomer Silverado Vineyards, Foot and Thomas Conservation Easements to the east, so it's a pretty special place. So, and I also want to recognize and thank a few of the approximately 50 Yountville Land Trust members who agreed to come here this evening and join me in thanking you for this proclamation. And they are here, Barbara, Suzanne, Julie, Alvin, and Alan. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Keep up that good work.
You guys are going to miss all the fun.
You have to go out and protect the lands, I understand. Well, thank you again. I will move on now to Item 10C, a presentation, proclamation declaring May 15 through the 21st, 2011, as National Public Works Week. And Graham, I'll kind of read this toward you, but also the whole public work staff that we have here in town. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, storm drains, streets, parks, and public buildings; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform; and whereas the American Public Works Association proclaims the third week of May each year as National Public Works Week to recognize the people who devote their professional time and energy to public works, making communities better and safer places to live. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 to 21st, 2011, as National Public Works Week in the town of Yountville, and I call upon all our citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions that public works staff make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. So, on behalf of our entire crew, Graham, thank you, and thanks to all the town staff. All right, we'll move right on, right on to Item 11, Public Hearings, and we have none. So, we'll move on to Item 12, Administrative Regular Items, and I did, in fact, remember that we have changed 12A and 12B, so we will first address 12B, which was a vote previously taken on appointing a Yountville representative to the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency Bicycle Advisory Committee. We have staff report and/or results of that vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council staff posted the notice of vacancy for the Bicycle Advisory Committee, and at the close of the filing period, received one application from Jim Baker. Mr. Baker was interviewed by council earlier this evening, and vote tallies have been submitted by council, and it was unanimous to appoint Mr. Baker to the Bicycle Advisory Committee, and I ask that you make a motion to appoint him to serve as a three-year term and authorize me, staff, to forward the appropriate information to NCTPA for final consideration.
Do we have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again, Mr. Baker, if you're watching out there. He was extremely qualified, I would say, and he'll be a very good representative for us on, on the Bicycle Advisory Committee. So, thank you for stepping forward. All right, we'll move right ahead to Item 12A, then, which is an in-council budget workshop, number two, for fiscal year 2011-12, a general fund overview.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the management team and staff, we're very pleased to share with you where we are progressing on the budget development. Tonight, you're going to get an overview of where we stand, revenue projections, and how the initial take in a kind of a grand scheme. So, I do want you to realize it's a conceptual overview. I'm going to talk a little bit, and we've got a little bit of a narrative slideshow, but I do want to remind you that our next two workshops, which are half-day each, will go into much more of the specific detail into the various departments. Tonight's overview is just to generally give you a snapshot of where the budget looks like, what are some of the trends that we're seeing, and some of the issues, and to get some feedback from you as we move into the half-day workshops.
And if I could, since you just brought that up, would you just mention the dates and times, at least of the next one?
Well, there'll actually be a slide on that, but the half-day budget workshops will be the next two Tuesdays, so that will be Tuesday...
May 24.
May 24 at 1:30, and then Tuesday, May 31 at 1:30.
Thank you.
All right. At this stage, I have to share with everybody that we have approximately 160,000 structural deficit. That deficit consists of 135,000 in operating funding gap, and 25,000 is recommended in an appropriated contingency fund, which may or may not ultimately be used. This remains a very conservative projection based on the previously approved Town Council budget parameters, with only slight adjustments projected based on sales tax, based on our updated reports, and includes recommended cost recovery and certain proposed fee increases phased in over three years in certain park and recreation program and service fees. Town staff hopes that the council will continue through the proposed budget in detail and work to make final decisions, which I believe ultimately will allow for us to present a balanced budget by the time we complete our workshops. And that may include a funding, there are some funding options that we discuss with you at the end of the staff report that will allow us to potentially recover some of the issues. I do want to stress that there are some trends that I think we need to be aware of, and we need to think about as we go through on the budget. Trend number one, and it's a positive one, is the fact that had the council not taken previously action to address our water and wastewater utility rates, you would be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of a $460,000 structural deficit because of the necessity to cover the operating. So, that's real positive. That would not have been a lot of fun. So, I think it shows also, and you're going to see it show up slowly over the next five years, it will also have a positive impact as we move forward with capital projects funding, because long-term, both of those enterprise funds will be better positioned and on a sound footing, that the rate payers will be paying for the projects and not the capital projects fund, so that will free up some of that funding. Our final budget adoption is scheduled for the Town Council meeting on June 21, 2011. Our goal, and we've met every year, unlike our friends in Sacramento, and when I say our friends in Sacramento, I'm not referring to the city of Sacramento, because they do as we do. They adopt a balanced budget as required by state law prior to the close of the fiscal year. We will meet that. General fund revenue trending, I have mostly good news. We are seeing, and I should point that the revenues principally paid by our visitors are increasing, and we'll see more detail that Kathleen is going to go to, but we're projecting a modest increase in sales tax and a substantial, or 300,000 increase in TOT. Staff, based on our new software and council direction, is increasing our focus on appropriate cost recovery when it can be determined, and will continue to do so based on the direction provided by council. I do need to share with you, though, that property tax, which is the revenue paid principally by our local residents, is actually declining. Property tax receipts peaked at 943,000 and are projected in this current budget to only materialize 815,000, a decrease of 128,000. And I just put that in perspective, because if you look at our $160,000 structural gap and a decrease in 128 in property tax from what had been previously generated, you can see that structurally, we're really not all that far off. And in tonight's presentation, I'm going to, you're going to see that theme a little bit, because one of staff's recommendations to you is that with several things that are in play, it may be prudent for us to look at some of the alternative mechanisms that we address for you to potentially address that. Other notable changes, our budget continues to focus on a maintenance of effort. We've discussed that, that's consistent. The proposed budget maintains core town programs, services, and staffing levels and operating budgets at generally the same level as was provided in fiscal year 2010-11. No core or primary town-provided programs or services are proposed for elimination or significant modification, with the exception of one we'll talk about. No employee layoffs or furloughs are required in the proposed budget. Notable changes in our building inspection program. First, due to limited construction activity and nearing build-out, we are seeing a significant decline in building permit revenue, and we don't see that as a trend that's not going to continue. I think that's our new normal, and by having said that, that's going to require Bob and I have to reevaluate and really come up with a new delivery plan for building permit, and that's what we're going to be doing. And that will result in the most significant delivery of service change, because obviously, right now, for the public that may or may not be aware, we use the contract consultant for building inspection, which means we can scale back. The challenge we're going to have to is to figure out the appropriate amount of time versus what our permit revenue's coming in, and how to most effectively do that. And right now, we're evaluating that. As I said, we already use a hybrid service mechanism. We're looking at shared services, some different conversations, but we are going to have to do something different, and the public's not going to have the same level of service, because right now, we can basically deliver a building inspector in a very short turnaround, and something's going to be very different. And I do think that... And I do think that that will be an ongoing trend, that, you know, we're going to see a little spike this year from where we have been, and principally, when we've had significant commercial construction activity, as we've had for the last five, six years, that's basically allowed the small projects to benefit from that, and we simply don't have that. Our new financial software is proving very helpful in tracking costs. As a result, we're able to identify and track it at much higher detail. This has proven really beneficial in our park and recreation program, but in other areas as well. But what it's really allowing us to do is have a better understanding of true cost and make sure we can analyze those. So one of the questions, and you'll see a more detailed presentation, the council will be asked to provide policy direction to establish cost recovery targets and subsidy levels for various park and rec programs as we go through our budget. Revenue generation from impact fees continues to decline. You've heard me say that, and you've seen it in writing every year. It continues to be true, and again, as we reach build-out, you know, the impact from new construction will be limited. So we will continue to have, my affectionate term is what I refer to as drib and drabble, which means there'll be a little bit of revenue periodically, based on when something comes in, and it will come in and be used to reimburse the general fund for an expense that's already been incurred in most cases. So we will continue to collect, but it's not going to be a substantial funding source that will allow you to go out and do something new. COPS grant funding, the proposed budget does not include the one-hundred-thousand, that's consistent with our budget parameters. As you may have seen of late, there is some strong bipartisan effort. In essence, nobody in Sacramento wants to be the one that gets blamed for killing the program, but politely, staff will not believe it until we see it. Again, I want a footnote, if a hundred thousand is restored in this program, and if I was betting, I would say there's a good chance that that's going to happen, but I'm not going to put your budget. Again, same analysis, if we took our hundred-and-sixty, added the revenue from a hundred thousand, we have a structural deficit of sixty. Of that twenty-five thousand is our applied contingency. I'm just using this to everybody understands that we have an issue, but it's scalable and one that can be managed, and also, when we talk about some of our revenue projections, you know, we've been very conservative with our revenue projections. We have also recently learned how much our community loves, values, and appreciates Community Cleanup Day. So one of the issues that I am going to put in there for budget consideration under community promotion would be, you know, a potential line item, that if the town council wants to continue funding this, that that would be an option that you would put in community promotion. I know Councilmember Moller will give a little update later in tonight's meeting about some of the ongoing discussions with regard to that with Upper Valley Waste.
I would just like to highlight it, in case people are watching now that aren't going to be watching later, if you could just give maybe a thirty-second explanation that we did not remove that from the budget, it wasn't in the budget in the first place, and now the topic may be whether we try to find money to pay for that service.
That's correct, Mayor Dunbar. Over the past several years, the town has not funded the town cleanup. The town's effort has been to promote and market it, and it's been paid from a grant provided based on rate payer payments, but a grant provided by Upper Valley Waste, and they've each year for the last three years have applied a credit, so each year of the program. And this year, we were informed approximately two months ago that there was only a little, say, a high three-thousand, approaching four-thousand credit left. Their estimated cost for the program was nine-thousand, and if we wanted to do it, we would need to pay the difference, and that was not something that the town had put in our budget. So going forward, that is something the council will consider, and it is an appropriate consideration, and if you asked us to, that will be something under community promotion. The other theme that I want to talk about is, we have to be really careful when we refer to the term surplus revenue. The town council has adopted previously policies that, in essence, design a budget that is going to have revenue beyond our expenditures. We haven't seen that the last two years because of the very tight budget situation, but that is by policy how the council has chosen to fund the capital projects fund. And previously, so that's why I want everybody to know that if you hear the word excess our revenue, part of that's a policy choice, and that is how we're actually trying to raise money to fund the capital projects fund. So if we don't put money into it, at some point, we're not going to have revenue to pull for those capital projects. So it's not surplus, it's not excess. Some communities actually would budget a transfer in. Our particular historical funding structure has been by policy to apply at year-end revenue generated in excess of expenditures. So just a footnote, the good news is we are potentially going to see a bit this year where we're going to be able to talk about actually funding some of that.
Vice Mayor, do you have a comment?
Yeah. Can you just clarify on that? When you say this year, you're talking about having some surplus at the end of this fiscal? To your point, we're not, it says we will see returned revenue generation in excess of approved expenditures. You're not talking about next year's budget?
I'm talking about the current fiscal year, that's correct. And we actually have a slide, and we'll go into a bit more detail. A lot of what I'm giving you is a Reader's Digest snapshot, and then Kathleen will go into a bit more of the specifics. So I'm trying also to set a stage, so you understand some of the issues we're wrestling with, but it is important that we not treat that as surplus, because those monies go into very important programs and objectives, and we've been drawing down some of those, and we do need to make it. And it's policy, so it's not, and I don't want to say it's schematics, or it's semantics, or how you want to apply it, but we, in our current structure, should be in a positive year generating two-hundred to three-hundred above revenue projections in order to meet all of the council's policy objectives. And as you can see, obviously, you know, even last year, we had a structural, a small structural deficit, and because of conservative budget practices, we're going to show you what we think's going to be a favorable outcome for the end of the year. Another policy consideration is this is the last year, and for the proposed fiscal year budget, is the last year of our current OPEB policy that the council directed, and the budget reflects increasing from six percent to seven percent. So the OPEB policy will be one that needs to be looked at and revisited. What I will tell you is that to go from seven percent to full funding at approximately fifteen percent would result in a net increase of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand, meaning we would have some difficult decisions about what we would need to trim in order to do that. But that's just to give you a snapshot of what that would look like, because the vice mayor did ask what that cost impact would be. And we will have the opportunity over the course of the next year to revisit our policy. And as you know, the council has taken a very positive step of establishing the irrevocable trust, and that should be established by the end of the year with a balance of approximately six-hundred-thousand, which is also a very favorable outcome.
I'm sorry, can I just ask one question to the OPEB? So is that one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that's referenced, that's in addition to the a hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar structural deficit today?
Correct.
Thank you.
So in other words, we would have to trim an additional hundred-and-fifty from the budget to fund it at fifteen percent. That's a, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that, that's exactly what that means. And then, next steps to a balanced budget, and I want to make sure everybody here in the council and the public knows, staff's not excited about presenting a budget that has a structural gap. However, as we've talked, the situation's manageable, and I think we also need to look at, given some of the factors in play, do you want to go through a process of potentially structurally eliminating or restructuring some of the service deliveries and revisiting your parameters, or do we want to focus a little bit on how we might manage that? So from that standpoint, we do believe that there are some aspects. We'll finish, now we're going to have Kathleen give you a bit more of the detail, the PowerPoint, then we'll come pick up that theme about how we might address our a hundred-and-sixty-thousand structural deficit.
Thank you. I'm going to go through this, and I welcome questions as we go along, feedback, comments and all. So Steve got us off to a good start. We're going to briefly talk about our budget development process, and then we're going to review our key budgeter parameters and assumptions, and then we'll go over general fund summary, review our general fund revenue, an expenditure overview, and then our estimates for two thousand and ten, eleven, and then wrap up at the end. But like I said, as we go through, please feel free to ask questions or make comments. So our budget process, we start in March, and I won't read all the steps, but we start by talking and discussing and doing our planning. And then this year, for the first time, the management team were able to enter their requests into Springbrook, so I got some good feedback on that. They kind of liked that, it was easier than the old way we were doing it. And then we had our first budget workshop at the April fifth council meeting, where we just started introducing our parameters and assumptions for preliminary purposes and planning purposes. And then we have a lot of meetings, and we run a lot of different scenarios, and then we all sit down with town manager, and we go through, and he makes his comments and changes, and then we kind of wrap it up and bring it to you for review and feedback and changes and approval. So that's where we're at, and we talked about our two future budget workshops coming up, one next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, from one-thirty to five P.M., and then May thirty-first from one-thirty to five P.M. And that's where we'll go into more detail by department. So, we'll read along.
Those workshops are right here in the council chambers?
Yes, right here in the council chambers. And information will be posted on our website for the May twenty-fourth, be up by the end of the week for people to review. We also have a public binder in town hall, if somebody doesn't have access to the website and wants to review the information. So just running through our budget parameters and key assumptions, of course, we always want to balance our budget and keep our expenditures within our projected revenue or other available funding sources. We're trying to maintain our existing core services at the same level where possible. New services and initiatives should have an identified and secured funding source. We're evaluating our town programs, and where appropriate, establishing cost recovery targets. And two areas, as town manager alluded to, we're really focused on this year include our parks and recreation programs and our building permits and planning fees. We're also aiming to include a one-hundred-thousand-dollar general fund contingency reserve, and those would be funds set aside in reserve that town council could appropriate if needed during the year for things that come up that are unforeseen or unknown at the time we adopt our budget. We are implementing our seven percent OPEB rate, and that will net us about forty-three-thousand dollars to the OPEB trust this year. And as Steve said, we'll be reviewing that policy in the future to see how we want to adjust going forward. We've been inching that up one percent each year for the last four years, I believe. We also, over the past two years, had set aside one percent of salary costs and put aside a liability reserve for PERS increase. So we're using that thirty-two-thousand dollars this year to help offset a two-point-one-one-eight percent increase in our PERS employer rate. And our rate did go from sixteen-point-four-one-six to eighteen-point-five-three-four percent. So that's about a fifty-three-thousand-dollar increase to the town, but with this offset of thirty-two thousand, that brings that down to a twenty-one-thousand-dollar impact on the general fund. We're also continuing to implement our new second-tier PERS retirement, and that's where new hires will come in at two percent at fifty-five, versus the two-point-seven percent at fifty-five formula that current retirees, current employees have. And new employees will also be required to pay ten percent of their medical premiums. And this year, we have eliminated the community grants program, which was the policy the town council adopted last year, which was the last year of funding for that program. If needed, we can decrease or defer our CIP projects to stay within our available funding sources. And we are implementing, this is the first year of a five-year water and wastewater rate increase, and as Steve pointed out, that would have really, it just would have been, we would have all been pulling our hair out trying to balance our budget if we had to subsidize the water and wastewater funds this year. So...
Excuse me?
Yes.
Kathleen, I was wondering, have we begun collecting revenues from that?
Yes, we have.
Where are those revenues reported?
They go into the water and wastewater fund.
Okay. And do we have copies of those?
Not yet.
I see, okay. That's just...
We will cover those in the workshop on the thirty-first.
Thank you.
Kathleen, if I could just also go back to your bullet point, and this is for Graham also, I'd be interested in the CIP projects that are maybe on the front of the to-do list, if some of those have long-running processes, you know, for design costs or approval bids, whatever, so we know what we can potentially adjust if necessary, maybe already in the mix in some.
It's a great point, Mayor, and I think one of the things that you will see, you will see an outline of our proposed CIPs that affect this fiscal year or start this fiscal year, or some that have started and are continuing, because we have taken that approach. There are a few that are in design this current year, and they moved to construction. And if you may recall, we've also consolidated a few projects to try to save money by doing more focus on the project management and combining them. So that's a very good footnote, we'll do that, and you'll see an overview of the current projects, and then in early July, we will bring the full comprehensive five-year CIP back. So you will see a CIP outline and an enterprise fund outline on the thirty-first as part of your agenda. We refer to that as all public works, everything public works, and public works ad nauseam day. We love it, though, but I'm just saying, you will find that the twenty-fourth reflects the public works department, streets, it's just the way the budget calendar is flowing, but that's where...
Maybe we should have had the public works portion during public works appreciation week.
We should have.
We'll show them more appreciation that day.
One other footnote and indirectly mention on this, when we bring back the policies for review as part of the budget, the council had asked us to include an enterprise fund policy, and we will have, a draft has been prepared and will be presented at that point in time for your consideration as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, yes?
Speaking of those policies, you refer to the OPEB as we need to do that sometime. When was your intent to propose that we were going to discuss that OPEB policy?
It will be brought to the council, it's just right now that council guidance governs this fiscal year, so your feedback, and if we readjust that policy, will be footnoted and made at that point in time when we do our overview of the financial policies.
Okay.
Because as you know, each year in the budget, we've taken the practice of consolidating all of our finance-related, so they're in the budget documents, so everybody can see them, and then we look at them every year.
But we can have a discussion on the thirty-first and then decide how to proceed with that. So a quick summary of some changes for the eleven-twelve budget. We've updated some of our staffing allocations to reflect our current labor distributions, so you'll see that in some departments. We have some new codes for park and recreation fees, we've broken things out a little differently to help tracking. We have new departments and divisions for parks and recreation to make Samantha happy and to help with our tracking. We have new codes to break out certain costs, such as utility expenses, all used to go into one account, we've separately broken out our PG&E water, or our gas and electric from our water and sewer, from our garbage and recycling. It just helps us better manage some of those costs and see where the money's going. We're also going to be recommending some consolidating and closing of some certain special revenue funds, and two that I know right off the top of my head are our housing opportunity fund and our streets fund. And this is a result of GAS-B fifty-four, just this little publication here, and it's basically, it requires some changes to our fund balance reporting and our governmental fund-type definitions. So we'll also be talking about defining some of our fund balance terminology, and I'm still poring through it myself, I mean, the book is very short, but it leaves some gray area, and I just have to, the best, figure out the best way to lay it out and describe it. But instead of the restricted and reserved terminology that's now used commonly in our CAFR, it's going to be committed and assigned, so just some new terminology. So we'll also talk about that on the thirty-first. As Terry Craig, our auditor, likes to say, it's always something with the GAS-B, but I think once we all get on board with the definitions and what they mean, it hopefully will be helpful.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I wanted to go back just for a moment to the parks and rec and the new department and divisions and codes and all that, and I noticed that in the general fund summary proposed for two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve under revenue, you have the revenue going from a hundred-and- have the revenue going from $191,650 to $304,185. And is that something that we're going to see in depth, that plan to make that jump?
Yes.
Yes, you will.
Yes, we'll get there.
Okay. Great.
I have a question as well.
Yes.
So, you're planning to close out a special fund we have for streets?
Yes.
So, anything we do to streets in the future, is that going to be seen under CIPs?
Well, and let me, let me explain. The reason it would need, it no longer qualifies as a special revenue fund is because it doesn't have an outside restricted funding source. So what we were going to propose is that it would be closed into the Capital Projects Fund and then it could still be used for street projects.
So you'll roll the money into that, is that what your proposal?
Or exhaust it for streets related and the balance would get. And I think I want to pay attention to what Finance Director Bradbury identified. Special funds need to have a unique revenue source. And under the current identification, you know, if it's coming from the general fund and we're just moving it from general fund and parking it in another general fund with a name, they're saying no. Because really, at our point, it's a, it meets the definition for the Capital Projects Fund. So, you know, Capital Projects has funded streets repair, projects replacement. So, you know, at some point in time, a council made a decision and from what our forensic analysis, it was general fund money that created the approximately 290,000 Street Reserve Fund. And going forward, as we've already identified in last year's budget discussions, the Housing Opportunity Program or Fund is no longer going to be able to generate sufficient revenue from impact fees to pay for the operating. And you can kind of get a theme there, when it transitions to operating, it doesn't really meet that definition. So, kind of in that theme, but I think that's exactly what we would intend to do, is that funding can be used to potentially cover when we get our true numbers for all of our street projects, or we transition into the Capital Projects and then draw them down for various street projects at that point in time.
Right. Because we do have to implement GASB 54 with the, at the end of June 30th this year. So however we decide we want to allocate those funds.
Okay.
Okay, so here's a snapshot of our proposed budget as it's presented to you now in the book. And our total revenue's at $6,44,805 and our total expenditures at $5,604,610. So you can see revenue less expenditures before transfers at $440,195. And of course, because we do have different funds and fund accounting, we do transfers. The OPEB allocation, it just shows up in this category. It's an accounting thing, but it shows up here because the expenses to pay for the retiree benefits are included in our expenditures and also the transfer that we'll do to the trust is included in our expenditures. So this is like the net amount that we're bringing in for OPEB. And that's the $128,590. We do get a 1% administration fee on our T-bid, so that's the $6,085 coming into the general fund. We are using our Fire Emergency Services Fund, we're using that to help offset the cost in our fire contract that's related to replacing the fire engine. So that's a, an eligible cost for those funds, which are collected almost like an impact fee. So that's $17,333. And then we're transferring $50,000 to our Capital Projects. And you might remember several months ago, we brought that in as a proposal that over six years, we would transfer 50,000 each year to get back to that $300,000 that we used from the Capital Projects Fund to true-up our Community Center Project Fund. So this is year two of that transfer. We have a transfer for our debt service payment on our lease revenue bonds, and that's $664,950. And that's principal and interest for the year. And then I'm showing this as a transfer to Housing Opportunity Fund, and that is the cost to operate our housing programs. But what I have confirmed with our auditor is we will need to close the housing fund, so that will just move into the expenditure category the next time we present this. It won't impact the bottom line, however. So total transfers of $601,112 and that gets us to our, unfortunately, deficiency after transfers, which is our, our net budget shortfall of $160,917. So it's kind of a summary of where we're at right now. So this is a snapshot of our revenues by major category. And you can see, as the town manager alluded to earlier, our property tax has gone down a bit. Part of that is related to the excess ERAF that we've been getting every year, but we do not budget for because it's subject to calculations by the county, the school district, and it's subject to state approval. So that is part of why it's a decrease from $889,000 to $815,000. But our sales tax trend is very positive and our TOT is exceeding our projections for the current year. So based on what we're projecting for the current year, 10-11, we're projecting that flat for next year. We believe that to be conservative. Yes.
I have a general question about property taxes and sales taxes.
Sure.
When, unlike the TOT, which goes straight into our coffers.
Yes.
The property tax and the sales tax generated goes to Sacramento and then a portion comes back to us. Do you know what portion that is?
I don't off the top of my head, but, but for the property tax, it's actually collected and distributed by the County of Napa.
Okay. But we don't get all. So if I pay $5,000 a year if I own a home, that $5,000 doesn't go to County of Napa and $5,000 comes back to Yountville. Do you know what portion of a dollar?
I don't, but that's a good question.
It's less than 20%.
Less than 20%.
It's my understanding, it's about 6% or 7%.
Yeah.
Property tax?
Right. Most of it goes to the state and then a large portion goes to the county and then 6% or 7% comes back to the town.
That's my understanding for sales tax.
Sales tax is actually CITUS, we receive 1%, so the current sales tax, I should say the town receives 1%. There's a half-cent measure A, which we are, a portion of that comes back to it. But the balance of it either goes to the special district, the county, or the state. So that's 8.25 or 8.75, we're only collecting 1% of that.
1% is point.
Correct.
1% twice, you said?
1% is point.
1% is point.
Correct.
So, just for people who are listening, so on, if you pay a dollar of your property tax, we're actually getting five or six cents into the town of Yountville.
I think we may be a little closer to 12 cents, I want to, but I want to review that. But the bottom line, your message is right on point. That big check that they write, we're not the recipient of most of it.
Right. And the sales tax, just so, I think that would be about the same thing, that if we get a dollar of sales tax generated by any business in town, then maybe about eight cents comes into our coffers.
That's actually very correct.
Okay, thanks.
And I will also point out, if you look at sales tax, and I'm going to be honest, Kathleen and I wrestle with this particular number, even as we moved our number up to Our trending is, we're probably still very conservative on our sales tax revenue number because if you look, you'll see that we peaked at 7.92 just last year. So, we're being conservative, but I do think that there's probably some elasticity there.
Those are our biggest areas. We also have rents and concessions and that's a total of our rent on our post office building and the rents that we collect for our community hall, community center rentals. And the other large number is the parks and recreation fees and I'll show you a breakdown of that a little bit later, on a later slide. So if there's no other questions or comments about revenue, this is kind of how the pie breaks it out. Obviously, TOT's the big ticket item for us. And as Councilmember Mueller pointed out, that does come to us directly and we like that.
And what I'll point out is the overall percentage paid by our visitors in this community remains relatively constant at approximately 75% of our total revenue. And I, I know I'm harping when I tell you all this, but our current property tax does not pay for the combined police, law enforcement, and emergency medical services. We spend about $1.23 million on those two core services on a property tax base of $815,000. So, I know we're kind of harping on this, but it is really important that our community understand where our money comes from, and you'll see a converse slide shortly, where it goes. And it's not going to look a whole lot different other than the, the numbers reflecting the current dollar amounts. The fortunate news for us is that we're seeing some positive trending in our revenue stream, which is allowing for some of the cost escalation in our core services. And we're being very fortunate in the fact that we are not really having to trim or eliminate services.
So this just shows some, the last four years of our three largest revenue sources, our TOT, sales tax, and property tax. And we have grown in our TOT and that's been primarily due to new rooms added at this So this is just a quick summary of our revenue projections for these key revenues and how we did come up with our numbers. Current year, 10-11, we budgeted $3.4 million for our TOT, but we are estimating to come in at $3.65 million and it could be higher. But we want to stay conservative, so we're budgeting the $3,650 for next year because we'd always rather come back and say we can beat that projection. And we are counting on the room rate trends continuing and continued economic recovery. And we are seeing that trend being very positive at this point. Our total property tax is less than we budgeted for last year and that is because we don't include our excess ERAF, even though we always hope we'll get something. And we did get an allocation or we, and we will be getting, I should say, we got an allocation of some excess ERAF in the current year and we are scheduled to get a little more excess ERAF before the year closes. And part of that was, the auditor controller was holding some money back until the state did their audit and signed off on, on it all. And I don't know what that number is yet, but we will be seeing that before the end of the fiscal year. And that'll be a positive for us as well. And our total sales tax, as Steve said, we, we looked at this number and we really, we took it up from our initial projection, but we didn't want to go too high and be too overly optimistic, but we feel really comfortable with our $775,000 projection. And our COPS grant, until the state says they have a funding source, we're just plugging that in at zero. But we do rely on that to help fund our contract with the county sheriff. Our licenses and permits, that's, that's down primarily due to a decrease in building permits, which is attributable to a slowdown of growth in town. As Steve alluded to, that kind of shows the new normal in town. We're reaching build-out, so all those years where, you know, Bob just had project after project after project has somewhat slowed down. So we'll be monitoring that and we think $20,000 is a reasonable estimate for that. Community hall rental, we're projecting at $84,000 and that's equal to what we estimate for 2010-11. Community center rental, we're projecting at $10,000, which is also what we're estimating for 2010-11, which is our first full year of rentals. So we're still, you know, developing those numbers, but we feel comfortable with those projections. And our parks and recreation fees, yes, this is a total of $304,185. And those include various fees to, fee increases to programs such as class fees, events, excursions, after-school and camp programs. And the estimated fees for 2010-11 are $191,000. So it does represent a significant increase of approximately 59%. And this is a slide breaking out the various fees. And it used to all be included in that $35.35 recreation fee. And with Samantha's guidance, we've broken it out on her recommendation into these various categories so that we can have a better tracking of all the different ways that we're generating revenues and what we're charging for, for certain programs. So if there's any comments or questions, we'll just keep going. So, now this is just an overview of our expenditure projections. We are maintaining our current staffing level at 24 FTE. We have all full-time benefits, all full-time employees opting in for eligible benefits. Certain employees are eligible for step increases. And we did project a 2.5% cost of living increase. The employees had, are entitled to a July 1 cost of living increase, but the CPI was just released and it's actually at 3%. So it's going to be about $10,000 more than what we had projected.
The fuel cost situation in the last quarter really spiked that particular element.
Yeah, because we looked at it two months ago, it was 2.2%. So we thought 2.5 was pretty good, but it's 3%. So that, that's changed since we put this together. I talked about our PERS employer rate going up. We also estimated 10% premium increase for health benefits and a 5% increase for our dental premiums, which is kind of along with what the trends we've seen over the past couple of years. We talked about our OPEB rate increasing from 6% to 7% and that we're not going to set aside for our PERS reserve this year, but we're going to utilize the monies that we had set aside in the previous two years. And our part-time staffing hours, those are based on programming needs by departments.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Mayor Demar. Kathleen, just a question on your estimated 10% premium increase for health benefits. When, when is the renewal?
We don't find out until August, generally.
And you have open enrollment in November for a January restart or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My, my experience in this is that this year, they've come in around 25% across the board. And that's, that's my experience in the private industry.
Again, we are part of the PERS employer, so we, we've been, I mean, it'd be great if somebody would give us a real number prior to the budget.
Good luck.
We don't.
Yeah. And I don't know why they haven't been able to figure out how to get this program on track with the timing that we all do, but if you look at what we've done, we're hopeful, but that, you're right, if that number, you know, if PERS rates come in at 25%, we will have an adjustment that we'll have to make in that factor. Vast majority of our employees are on the Kaiser Plan, which in this region is one of the reasonable and has generally had, on average, lower rate premium increases. But I'm just going to say that's, you know, we've got a holder, a holding point and we'd love to come back and tell you we've made it. And they're right, if it comes in over 10%, then we have an adjustment that we'll need to make at that point in time.
To be, be cognizant, because half my people where I work are on Kaiser as well and it was 25, so.
You know, the, the good and the bad of dealing with CalPERS is, CalPERS has a lot of people on the program and they can negotiate their group rates a little differently than some of the other organizations. But I'm, you know, at a certain point, if a health provider says it's X or, then we have that conversation.
These are some more expenditure projections. We are including a reinstatement of a $25,000 designated contingency expenditure appropriation and that would show up in non-departmental and it would allow the town manager to have a fund where he could go to approve things that weren't included in the budget.
And this is actually per the council. And this is actually per the council's policy. This is not new. It's something that if you go back and review your policy statements, we actually did not fund it last year. A good example could be what Councilmember Hall just mentioned, you know, the increase comes in for the medical premiums, and it results in a net cost of another eight thousand. That could be an example. Or hypothetically, had it been in place this year, we might have been able to use that to cover the cleanup day situation. So, I mean, it's not something I'm going to do willy-nilly, but the difference is that it's appropriated and it's built in the budget so that it can be expended. And obviously, at a twenty-five thousand dollar level, it's within my signature authority. So, it's not a change in council policy, but last year, we did not fund it.
We've included twenty-two thousand for our library contract. We also have eleven thousand six hundred for our animal shelter contract, and that's year three of a phased-in cost recovery from the county. Our town attorney budget currently includes twenty-five thousand dollars for litigation support, and Arnold may need to give us an updated number for that. Our budget includes twenty-seven thousand dollars for electronic records management, which is a project in the town clerk's budget. We have planning and building budget reduced by forty-eight thousand to reflect reduction in building activity. Town hall and government buildings, we have our energy retrofit loan program, which we budgeted in our current ten-eleven year, but we have yet to make a loan payment. I think all the paperwork and project is still kind of coming together as far as that goes, so that's twenty thousand in the budget for that. We have our law enforcement services, which we just approved our new sheriff's contract with a three percent increase. That was an increase of twenty-four thousand three hundred. And then we have our fire and emergency medical services contract with the county, and that was a no-cost increase this year, and that's the second year of a two-year contract. And here, a little hard to read, but here's a snapshot of the expenditure budget as compared to the current year's budget. And one thing that does somewhat skew the percentage in the numbers is the OPEB is going down, because we're showing the payment out that in the ten-eleven column under OPEB, you'll see the six hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-one, and that's just to show the payment that we'll make to the trust fund. And here's how the pie chart breaks out by functional area, I guess I would call it. We have public safety at twenty-three percent, parks and recreation at twenty-one percent, public works at twenty percent, which are the largest pieces of the pie. And then the rest of us all kind of fill in. And then this is just showing how the town's grown over the years and the different areas. And general government is comprised of many things. It includes both council, clerk, finance, admin. It also includes non-departmental, which is library services, animal shelter. All those things fall into that general government category.
I think Vice Mayor has a question or comment?
I guess terminology, they're using the term parks and recreation. I feel like we've used community services in the past. Parks and recreation doesn't mean the parks and maintenance employees are included in that, does it?
No.
That still stays in public works.
That's still in public, okay. I assume that was the case. I think that could cause some level.
But I do think, Vice Mayor, as we talked before, there's three primary areas that have really driven the budget. One of them is parks and recreation's community services. There's been a, over the last five years, there's no doubt been a significant increase based on council direction to expand and increase our service delivery, and that's been a cost factor. Second area is public safety, especially as we've implemented the backloaded contracts. So, the fixed costs became higher compared to five years ago, and that cost factor, we're catching up, and that's eroded, if you will, some of that balance. And then the third cost factor is general, the cost of doing things. Also, in non-depart, or the general government is also OPEB, because we went from having no strong OPEB to seven percent. You know, seven percent of our payroll is a significant chunk of change. So, when you look at it, I see no real surprises in where our budget's trending, but some people look at it and would question. And it does follow the council policies over the last five years, and not necessarily, there's no real change in service delivery on our public safety other than our mechanism for what we're paying to the providers. You know, and hopefully, we've leveled those two out going forward, so we won't be seeing, you know, those twelve percent increases. And again, the growth in parks and recreation does represent a conscious decision to improve the expansion of services in that area.
So, what does this mean for the bottom line? So, if we look here, this is showing a, there we go. So, here's our current year budget for two thousand ten-eleven and our estimated, where we think we're going to end the year, based on the information we have right now. So, we're projecting, we started our beginning fund balance with the two million one seventy-six, and a chunk of that was allocated when we came back to the council and we made those unallocated fund balance decisions. We have our revenue, which we project is going to exceed our projection, our expenditures, which we feel we will come under what we've budgeted, and we have transfers. And we get to an ending fund balance, which then breaks down as follows. So, we have our general fund reserve of one million one hundred five thousand. We currently have our reserve for contingencies of fifty thousand. And we have, we had fifty, but we now have forty thousand in our liability insurance reserve, and we are projecting we'll end the year with unallocated fund balance of four hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. So, just look at this same snapshot for the proposed budget as it stands now. You can see the revenue, the beginning fund balance, I'm losing my mouse, I'm sorry. We would start, so this is just bringing this ending fund balance up to here, and then revenue, all these numbers we just went through to get us to this one-five-two-eight four-one-eight. And then we could still maintain our one million one oh five, put in our fifty in to get our contingency back up to a hundred, and then we still maintain our forty thousand in liability reserve and have fund balance remaining.
I'll just go ahead and make a comment that it's really refreshing, and it speaks to your strategic planning, that there is a fund balance to be had, that that's a pretty unusual thing for a lot of cities these days. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, that you talk about conservative revenue projections and conservative even estimates on our expenses, but coming out with black numbers at the end is definitely where we want to be.
So, looking at that, and then just trying to consolidate where we expect to be, six-thirty-eleven, and what that means for us. If we use some of the funds at the end of the year to cover this current projected deficit for eleven-twelve, there's the one sixty-nine-seventeen. And then we could propose to allocate two hundred and twenty-five thousand to the capital projects fund, for example. We could put another twenty-five thousand in OPEB. This shows the fifty thousand going to the reserve for contingency, and that's what gets it back up to the hundred from the fifty where it ends the year. And then we'd still have some unallocated thirty-three thousand.
And I'm probably going to suggest that we're going to need to change those numbers a little bit to help perhaps adjust to cover our litigation costs as well, so that's going to be a tool. But again, as you can see, we do have tools and options, and I echo the mayor's sentiments that this is, you know, we're not touching our reserves, and in fact, we're growing our reserves. I do also want to point out that our reserve by council policy is a million twenty-five, and we have exceeded that by eighty thousand, you know, based on your actions. So, we're happy with that. I just, but I do want to point out that as a footnote, you know, it's actually grown, and in many of the neighboring jurisdictions, reserve fund balance has actually been drawn on in some cases to continue. So, our circumstances are one that require a little bit of caution, but some positive caution.
So, if, just for example, we took these actions, then here's what the breakout of the fund balance would look like. We'd still have our one million one oh five in our general fund reserve, and I'm not sure if that's going to be called committed or assigned under the new Gatsby, that's a gray area. But we'd have our hundred thousand reserve for contingency, we'd have our forty thousand in liability insurance reserve, and we'd have the reserve for appropriations, which is really just saying we'd cover our next year's budget deficit with those funds. So, that's kind of how it adds up.
So, just for clarity, we spent fifty, we allocated a hundred thousand dollars last year for this unallocated contingency reserve.
Yes.
And we spent fifty.
We did.
Correct. You have fifty thousand unallocated if you chose to apply that debt this year. Ready?
Yes.
All right. Now, that leads me to...
Can I go back one slide?
Yes.
This, you know, I answered my own question while I was thinking about it, sorry.
Yes, okay.
And again, I did want to reference, that's just a snapshot of potential ideas that the council could have, a little bit more in the staff report, and we'll deal with that, but that's just to show you there are some positive steps to a balanced budget. First thing I want everybody to take a step back and realize that our structural deficit of a hundred and sixty thousand represents two point six-five percent of our total general fund budget. In other words, it's small, it's manageable, and we have tools to address that. One of the tools that we can look at, and I'm on page three if you're going through, again, as we footnoted, we could use a less conservative TOT estimate. And again, I'm not advocating any of these, I want to share with you a framework, but as an illustration, if we said that the revenue projection was three point seven-five as opposed to three point six-five, then you only have a deficit of sixty. If we use a less conservative sales tax estimate than seven seventy-five, that potential deficit be decreased by either the ten or twenty-five thousand that's likely there. Third, we've already mentioned the COPS grant with a hundred thousand. So, what I'm trying to share in those scenarios there is that the revenue trends are likely to be better than projected, and if the grants receive, we're likely receiving more than two hundred thousand, which potentially could offset our hundred and sixty thousand. Also, we have another option, or part of the portfolio, is the council could choose to go in and significantly look at altering or modifying and decreasing program services and funding. We've mentioned that we have use of funds. One's already been presented to you, which is that we can cover the structural deficit by your unallocated revenues. We could remark a reserve like we did last year with the ninety-two thousand from the streets fund, which we ultimately never had to utilize, or, as many of your neighboring jurisdictions have, you do have general fund reserve balance. My point here is that you do have fund balance to cover that. Again, we'll discuss a little bit more as we finalize, but I wanted to let everybody know that while we don't take pride in presenting an unbalanced budget, I think where we're at right now with the various moving pieces, because the other thing for us to do to narrow out a hundred and sixty thousand would get into some significant analysis and potential restructuring of service programs, and that's certainly an option. The council can tell us, no, Steve, we want to go back and look at reshaping or revisiting some of these things. And I want to make it clear, we understand that. And as we get into the program details, that's certainly something you may want to consider. But I'm also trying to share with you, you have some things in place that if you're comfortable with these parameters, there may be some ways to work through. I also want to introduce something that I'm very excited about, although I probably was the only one for a long time that was really excited, although I think we've built some support with the town clerk and the finance director. But it's been a long time coming, but we'd like to propose a master fee resolution. And the concept behind a master fee resolution is that all fees and charges that the town tries to assess are put into one master schedule. Now, at first blush, that seems easier than it is, because we've had to go back and articulate and peel back tons of stuff, but the idea being that all of our various fees and charges, or the philosophy behind those, will be placed in one master resolution. We will adjust it annually at this time of year to reflect our costs of doing business, because they do have a correlation. So, we're very, very excited, or at least several of us are, about bringing this together, because, one, we're encapsulating some of that, and we are so, we are going to recommend in some cases some introduction of new fees and charges. In some cases, as you know, we've been bringing these up, we've been behind on industry standard. And some of that is, we need to look at putting those fee structures and mechanisms in place. So, some of what you're going to see is fairly common. You're going to obviously see our water and wastewater rates re-put back into the chart, that's already been approved, we'll footnote that. You'll see all of our planning and building, you know, some are fixed fees, some are deposits, so we'll write the deposit philosophy. But like I said, we are excited about that. We also think it's a more professional, modern way, one, we can keep track. I bring to you a good point, we recently introduced the FOG ordinance fees. It's been on the book for ten years. The council approved a fee ten years ago. We don't have a good answer as to why they never adopted a fee ten years ago, but, you know, cleaning up, we've been attempting to clean up some of those things and to put those in place. And more importantly, our users will be able to find all of our fees in one concise document where they can go look at what things will cost for them when they're doing that. So, like I say, you will see that, we will be tying that, you'll see that as a draft for comment on June seventh, and then if everything goes well based on your feedback and the public noticing process, it'll be as resolution on June twenty-first for formal adoption. So, again, I, these are some of those administrative cleanup things that we talk a bit about that we've been doing as a staff, and I'm very, very pleased with our efforts to kind of move forward and do some of the administrative gunk that is helpful.
Vice Mayor Bleach has a question.
Well, question slash comment. You've repeatedly used the term structural deficit, which I think is, I understand the concept of in a snapshot timeframe of one fiscal year, it's the expenditures exceeding revenues. I want to, I think it's worth pointing out as we go through this process, to some people, what that means, when you have a deficit in Washington and they go out and borrow a trillion dollars because they don't have the money. We do have the fund reserves, we have, it's like, you know, you've got your salary and we spent less than we brought in last year, and money's left over. I just want to be careful that people don't misinterpret what the concept of a deficit means, and that it's not, part of it's the fund accounting structure, but just understanding that the town is not on the brink of federal government, state government level.
No.
At all.
And I think that's very...
Not even remotely.
We won't be printing money in the back room either.
No.
I do think that's very appropriate, and I appreciate, but I also want to caution that everybody needs to realize that, you also said a very correct statement, if we took this year in isolation, we're not bringing in enough revenue...
It's unsustainable, yes.
And that's, you know, you've asked me and tasked me with trying to make sure that I'm looking five and ten years out, and that's why my footnote is, good, we've got some positive trends, but we've also got to make sure that we're looking and managing where we think our costs are going, and are we doing all the appropriate things to generate the revenue stream in place? Because I do think as we reach build-out, we're going to see a leveling out of our revenue streams, so we are going to have to evaluate the level of service and how much that costs. But I also, you know, there is a perception amongst some of the community that the town of Yountville is a perpetual ATM. We're not. We are a very fiscally stable organization that I think has done a good job of managing its resources for its appropriate mission. But every once in a while, others would like us to contribute towards their mission, and we may not continue to have enough money to spit out of the ATM... and we may not continue to have enough money to spit out of the ATM to make everybody happy. And we are going to have to make some service and conscious deliveries on our level. So, that's, I think, the footnote, but I also think our premise is pretty good. And again, I do want to stress, we've actually improved our overall service level over the last three years, not declining. And that's the credit of our employees, to the credit of the council. But there have been some individual decisions, such as utility rates and some things that we've had to take, which are putting us in good position. And I do think, especially when we get into some of the budget details, you know, our parks and rec, I challenge a lot of communities to go out and find a comparable situation where twenty-one percent of our budget is being spent on things that benefit at a park and rec level, our community. And like you pointed out, was pointed out by a couple of the council members, that doesn't actually include the cost of our park maintenance. Because our park maintenance is built into the Public Works Department. If we were to factor that, you're probably looking more accurately at thirty-five percent of our resources are spent into maintaining our parks, open space, and then the programming and activity. So, I mean, I think we feel pretty good about what we're presenting to you. And I also think we hopefully have earned enough respect with the council and the public that we aren't putting, you know, our projected expenditures are not, you know, lofty, we spend a lot of time making sure that it's realistic for what we're trying to do and that we come in where possible. And I think the last two years, we've shown that we've actually come in a little better because we do evaluate, and if that last five dollars doesn't need to be spent, it's not. But in many cases, we are cautious of what we project and also how we plan on expending.
And I'll follow up on that comment also, and it's been stated a little bit earlier tonight, which is, we're doing this without accounting tricks. It's become very popular in Sacramento and elsewhere. And also, the dialogue and discourse at the national level is mortgaging or leveraging the future generations for today's budget, and we're doing neither of those things. We're talking, as the vice mayor pointed out, about having to maneuver some money basically to cover some basic deficit this year, but that's in order to maintain our philosophy of continuing to fund the future. And, you know, previous councils have done it, but I think this council has been very proactive about it already to not sacrifice, you know, find that easy money. Well, if we just didn't, you know, cover our OPEB costs, or we didn't fund, keep those reserves high, we could easily eliminate the deficit and call it, you know, a surplus and we can all be smiling, but in two, three, or five years, we might not be smiling. So, I think it gets to the proactive approach the council and the staff has taken. So, let's not, you know, let that go unnoticed.
I think that's a very astute, and I would also say that, you know, this, I do want to reference that the council spent a lot of time in their strategic plan development and fiscal policies and, you know, your Council Operations 1.1 is to sustain and affect the town governance, and obviously, you're putting together a, crafting a budget that will do that. But secondly, I think, and more importantly, under Fiscal Health 5.1, we're budgeting to support the town's mission and the service delivery as the council determines appropriate. So, that's kind of what we have today. I think it hopefully gives you a good snapshot. Because we're in a generous mood, the finance director has prepared parting gifts for all of you, which are the general fund details for your budget.
They're found in your mailbox.
They're found in you. And we will begin in earnest, as I say, on the twenty-fourth, followed on the thirty-first to go into the more specific detail of the programs. So, if you do have questions, please, you know, feel free to ask. And also, if they come up between now and then, please don't hesitate to contact either Kathleen or I when it relates to what we presented so far. And I do think, as I say, we will be adjusting, we are going to have to look at, I think, setting aside some of that to cover litigation costs, but we'll deal with that at that point in time.
Well, I just, on behalf of the council, I'll thank Kathleen, Steve, and the rest of the staff. This was a very thorough, more than a snapshot, in my opinion, it was a very, very good start to the process or continuation of the process. So, it should make the twenty-fourth and thirty-first go even that much more smoothly. So, are there any specific comments or questions? We're not certainly going to drill down into any details tonight, but if there are any broad questions council might have. Councilmember Muller?
My, I think, broad stroke here is that I would like to see some thought, and I don't know if we're going to be able to get it even done for the next two budget sessions, but for really putting a more, or for us to talk about altering our plan for just using surplus to go into the capital improvement projects. I think that the dynamics have always been different in the past in Yountville, that we had surpluses. I think now, we're doing a lot more proactive things with our money. So, I would like for us to not just, okay, well, you know, if we have some or it works out that way. I think we need a strategic plan for funding CIP.
Well, I think that's part of what will be coming. The current adopted council policy says that it all goes to capital projects, and that's one of the ones that we think the council needs to discuss. And we agree with you that, you know, where that might go and what that looks like, I still think is pretty wide open. But it is something, because that is my one footnote, I will say, is, you know, the capital projects fund has not benefited well the last several years. And now, the rate structure will help because, you know, it's been paying for water and wastewater projects. But, you know, that fund sits at a little over one, don't hold me to it, but in ballpark, just over a million.
A million.
And it's not going to get bigger to do anything if we don't put more money into it. And some of the, some of the projects that the council wants to do have some big-ticket items. But I will say on the positive side, you know, we're generating some revenue and we have gas tax and a few other things, but, you know, the eight to ten million dollar cost to continue to underground the rest of the town, not really addressed. You know, there are some things that we're going to have to look at, but I will also say there's some different tools to the community that if we really want to pursue some of those, if that's really a high priority, we may just have to look at it differently. And I do think your footnote about, is it time to revisit some of the, you know, policies that may be decades old? Yes, I think that's something we'll definitely have on the discussion for you on the thirty-first. And it may even be something that evolves longer than that.
Well, and also, just to reiterate, one of the fundamental tenets we have in place is requiring funding sources for projects. And just like we discussed earlier tonight, to have that list of projects in the near, medium, and long term, that if we do have to adjust, eliminate, reduce the scope, whatever it is, to feel more comfortable that the sources are there, then we'll look at that. Any other comments? Great, thank you again. We'll move on to item thirteen, Staff Informational Reports, Technical Management Finance Tune-Up. So, that is, again, for our informational knowledge. If anyone has questions after they have reviewed that report, is there any questions of staff about that?
I will just share that Graham and I and Don and Barney, the wastewater plant supervisor and Streets Water Parks Division, we plan on periodically reevaluating ourselves using this program, you know, and we think there's some areas that we've already improved upon because one of the areas that we got a lot of positive is our financial. And I'll guarantee you that if we had taken this analysis six months ago prior to the rate, it would not have scored well on financial. But it also, I think, a positive footnote is the fact that we are going to be setting money aside to pay for infrastructure reflects why we did have part of the rate increase. So, there's the positive, I mean, we don't feel bad about that snapshot. It shows some areas that we need to work on, but we're committed and our team is working on those. But there is a correlation there, and I just wanted to take a moment to explain to people that may look at that, that that's why we're raising rates, is so we can put money in to invest in the wastewater and water infrastructure.
And I'll just also acknowledge, thank you to Graham, Steve, and the rest of our water treatment and water system staff, primarily at Recta Reservoir, for the tour that we were given so that we could really see the process, not only on paper, but in real time and in real scope. So, thank you again for that.
I also have two other items on our staff information.
Okay.
You may see a tree contractor, Branham Tree Service around town, they'll be pruning about sixty-four trees over the next two weeks, so I just want to give people a heads-up. We did deliver notice to residents so they know about the work coming and that they may want to get onto people's property. The second thing is that the temporary park and ride lot should be open tomorrow. So, that will be in interim temporary condition until NCDPA gets a grant and can do a permanent park and ride lot there with paving and concrete curbs and everything. But for the most part, it'll be open tomorrow.
So, we should be sure that Cabinet Secretary LaHood parks over at the temporary park and ride?
Well, we have a special parking place for him, but he can drive by on his way out of town.
Fair enough.
And then, they, that will be the Vine twenty-nine bus stop, that'll be in all the promotions with NCDPA. So, when the Vine twenty-nine stops in Calistoga, St. Helena, Yountville, that'll be the Yountville stop, and then that's the service that only stops a few times in the valley on the way to the BART station. And it's also available on weekends if people want to take the bike path.
Great. All right, we'll move on to item fourteen then, Council Reports and Comments, Upper Valley Waste Management. I understand, Councilmember Muller, you're going to give us a little bit of an update on the situation with Upper Valley?
There's, yes, I attended our monthly meeting of the Upper Valley Agency Management yesterday, and there was a lot of things on the agenda. The first thing that I want to highlight is that our next meeting will be on June twenty-seventh, and I urge anybody who would like to come, it's at one-thirty, right here in the Town Council chambers. They will be proposing a six point five percent increase in our rates, and that is for anyone who has garbage service in town. This, they say, is driven primarily by increased expenses in labor and fuel. We will just be starting, the budget detail, I know no more information than that right now, so this will be a great time to come and have your say about that. That is...
June twenty-seventh?
June twenty-seventh at one-thirty is our Upper Waste Management Board Meeting. And that's when we will be getting the more detailed information about that. That's all the information I have right now. I believe that if adopted, those rates will be going into effect July one of this year. So, I want to make sure that everybody knows about that. There's usually not a big crowd, so hopefully, you'll be able to find a seat. And I did have quite a bit of discussion about the information that we receive from our constituents about not having the funding available this year to continue our cleanup day. And there were, and I've learned quite a bit, there are several avenues that we are currently, will be talking about and getting information to look into that. One of those is, there is funding that when everybody recycles, or when everybody buys a bottle or a can, there's that two or three or five percent fee that's tacked on. All that money goes to the state, and like everything else, a little bit comes back. We pool ours as a joint powers with all the other, St. Helena and Calistoga, Napa, City of Napa is not part of this same system that we are in. And there is a, and that's called the State Beverage Container Recycling Payment Program. That program is, we have been pooling our money in the past years, and in the past, we have, well, most recently, I think everyone's seen these trash cans with the blue lids that are around town, and those are all part of where our money, approximately five thousand dollars, has been going this past year. Previous years, we've bought dumpsters for the schools, some in Yountville and some in other jurisdictions, as well as for our businesses for recycling. So, this is where all that money goes, that you pay every time you buy a six-pack of Coke or Seven Up cans or what have you at the grocery store. So, that, we are, I've asked them to look in to see if some of those money, since I think we're right now, looks like we've got quite a few garbage cans in town, I've actually heard from people that they would think they have too many garbage cans in town. So, we are listening and we've heard that. So, maybe we could use some of those funds. It's about five thousand dollars every year. There's actually extra funds that Calistoga didn't use because their public works didn't want to buy the cans because they didn't want to empty the cans. So, but they do have first rights to that money, but I put my hand up and said, we'll take your five thousand dollars this year if you don't want it, because it will go away. So, I have raised my hand and said, we'll take that. So, we'll see about that. Also, there can be, I understand, amendments to the contract that where we got the money before was there was twenty-five thousand dollars set aside that we have drawn down from, that we've used for these Yountville Cleanup Days. So, perhaps you can have your say if they're going to institute a rate increase, that we put that money back in the contract to allow us to use it for any kind of cleanups we want. So, we have, we're going to be talking about quite a few ways to bring that perhaps back to Yountville. Another thing that came up, they, the board that I sit on did approve, there was a representative, he's a consultant to the California Product Stewardship Council, his name was Ken Wells, and we did approve putting policy in place that we were going to request that the legislature approve this recycling for batteries and fluorescent lamps, battery paint and things like that. Instead of all of our recycling money going to support that, we are going to encourage all the manufacturers of those types of things to actually put something in place where they are now responsible for recycling those. Because what it will ultimately do, we probably won't see our garbage rates go down for recycling, but it will hopefully have a benefit of not having further increases so that we have to spend a lot of our money to recycle these things. The ownership will be put on the manufacturer of the paint or the battery to put these programs in place on, when they sell you one and you need a new one, that they will take them back and figure out whatever way they want to do that. So, I've asked Mr. Wells to come to Yountville and we could talk about, see, I think, Calistoga, St. Helena, as well as Napa have, they are adopting a support resolution for this. So, this could come back to us to see if we wanted to do something. So, it's really a numbers game. The more, you know, local governments that want to get behind this, I think it will send the message to the state of California that we would like to see them support this legislation. So, other than that, we're still working on trying to see how we can continue in the future our Yountville Cleanup Days.
Thank you. And just as a reminder to folks, it's traditionally been the week after the yard sale, but that doesn't mean that we don't have an option between now and next May to reinstate this. If we find a funding source, whether it be town money or other, we can certainly revisit it and assign a cleanup day in whatever form as appropriate. So, certainly, I'm sure all of us have heard from a few folks, and the town has heard from a few folks that were kind of caught off guard, frankly, by this. So, we have heard that message and we're seeing what we can do to rectify the situation.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
I understand on recycling, when you purchase a recycled product, there is a benefit to, but when you dispose of it, the, does Upper Valley Waste Management then collect that benefit from all of the cans and things that we throw away in our town?
Yes, they do.
And can't that money then be allocated to a fund for a cleanup day? Did you ask them about that?
Well, there's another complication that was just passed in January, it's Prop twenty-six. And Prop twenty-six says that if, you know, one person throws away something and that money can not, and they... and they cannot be used to pay for something else. So I think the best example is that we've all been paying our trash, money for our trash pickup, and in the past, we've, they've been able to use some, they've used some of their money to do a free trash pickup for the Napa Valley Wine Auction. So we're all paying for our fees and somebody else is getting the benefit of that based on Prop 26, and as soon as rates do increase, that will no longer be able to be in place. So that's would probably, I think the attorney for that agency would probably say, you probably can't do that, but that would be his call. So there's a lot of new things that are kind of taking place that are going to be, we're going to see some changes from some new legislation, so...
Well, but if those things were thrown away in the town of Yountville, then wouldn't that money, you know, going to, allocated to also have an additional pickup in Yountville would be sort of the same?
And there is, I mean, right now, there are five scheduled recycling days, a lot of that money goes to support that. So all that, the money they make from the recycling goes for, we just had one up at the Napa Valley Museum for Electronics, that was all supported by some of those fees that are collected. And that's just one more point, there will be some additional recycling events, I think one's going to be coming up, let me find it real quick, I think on, on June 4th at, again, at the Napa Valley Museum, it's going to be sponsored, it's a co-workshop with the Upper Valley Agency, and there will be another one August 17th at the White Barn in St. Helena, and October the 6th at our community center. So we have five of these, those events every year for recycling, so a lot of those funds go back into those recycling events.
So I'll just kind of wrap this conversation up. If you have any additional questions, I think you can ask Councilmember Mueller, and certainly some of those dates will be available on Upper Valley's website, the museum website, and I suspect some of that will also be available at Town Hall. Were there any other committee reports? Neither the city selection committee nor the flood control board met this period, so I have no reports on that. Are there any additional comments from council?
I have one there, number...
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
And again, just one last reminder for everyone, this Thursday at the Town of Yountville Community Center will be the WIC Symposium, starting at 9:00 a.m. I will be in attendance, and I believe the mayor is going to grace the group with at least some opening remarks, so, but please...
I don't know about gracing, but I'm going to give some opening remarks.
Al, whatever you want to call them. But that's starting at 9:00 a.m. this Thursday at the Yountville Community Center, so please join us.
Thank you for that reminder. Yes, Councilmember Dornbeck?
I would like to also mention that the Vietnam veterans are having a, is it a countywide stand-down on May, is it May 29th? Pardon my...
Watch fire.
Watch fire.
May 29th.
May 29th, watch fire, and the public is invited.
Actually, if I could, if I could ask, because we do have Alman Bundy in with us, could you maybe just come up and give the timing of the watch fire events on May 29?
I think you've all gotten a personal invitation...
Yes.
...to the watch fire, Steve and the council members and the mayor, and everybody's invited, especially the town of Yountville. Sunday, the 29th, the day before Memorial Day, the music starts at 5:00, food starts at 6:00, live music, we'll have a story of the watch fire, kind of a ceremony and an actual big fire, if you've been before, you know we do that. And then we have a lowering of the flag ceremony around 8:15. It's family-friendly, and the community's invited, and so I look forward to seeing everybody there.
Could you tell everybody where that would be?
Oh, excuse me, yeah, that's, thank you, Margie. It's at the entrance to the cemetery at the veterans home. And there will be some signage, but you probably might want to look at your Google Earth or MapQuest before you go.
Especially as the sun sets. But you also have a number of volunteers that are always there to help with parking and directions.
We do, that's right.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The one other thing I'll mention, and maybe Graham, if you'd like to touch on Secretary LaHood's visit, well, I'll just let you go ahead and mention that, but we do have quite an honor of not only Congressman Mike Thompson coming, but he is bringing with him Cabinet Secretary of Transportation Ray LaHood to see our Yountville Mile and the rest of the Napa Valley, or the Vine Trail, but any details you might be able to offer timing-wise?
Sure, we did have a meeting today, everything seems to be in order, and they're happy with the arrangements, and after the board meeting within Vine Trail Coalition, they're going to meet about 2:45 at Veterans Memorial Park in the plaza at the north end near California and Washington, so everybody's invited. From there, Secretary LaHood will probably walk partway down the Vine Trail path across California Drive, and then come back to the plaza, and then they'll leave from there and go, probably drive down Solano Avenue, essentially looking at the whole 44-mile Vine Trail from Calistoga to the Vallejo Ferry Terminal. So this is part of a trip that he's taking to California to look at many projects related to transportation, also San Bruno, looking at the Napa Airport, so all things related to transportation, the U.S. Department of Transportation, and so it was very fortunate that Congressman Thompson was able to invite him to Yountville for a meeting and a tour, and we appreciate having him here, and hope everybody will come out and welcome them to Yountville, and hopefully the trail will be impressive to them, and they'll use this as a model for the rest of the country.
And the rain will let up by tomorrow afternoon.
It will be dry.
Yes, thank you very much, yeah, that is a little special event that we have coming up right here in our own town, so. Any other council comments? Okay, with that, a few agenda items just to be aware of coming up, we mentioned our budget workshops coming up on May 24th and May 31st, right here in the council chambers, both starting at 1:30, correct? Going the rest of that afternoon. Also, Napa City County Library Commission, Yountville representative interviews, and hopefully appointment coming up also. With that, we'll move on to closed session. Do we have an anticipated course of action that may be coming out of this closed session?
We do not, Mr. Mayor, but we do not. We do have one item under public employee performance evaluation, that being the town manager.
Thank you. So we will be reconvening after the closed session, but just in case folks don't stay tuned, again, Tuesday, May 24th at 1:30 will be our next meeting, it will be a special meeting to work on the budget workshop. So with that, we will adjourn to closed session.